Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of City Council for one. If we could stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could have a moment of silence for our fallen military? Thank you. You may be seated. Kristen, has Will called in?
Yeah.
Can we start with you? Chief Will, can we start with you for introductions, please?
Hello, Martin. The Royal Professional Services. Don Price, DPW Director.
Scott Sutter, Chief of Police.
Anthony, Deputy President. Kristen Penney, Assistant Mayor.
Pam Howes, City Councilor.
Jerry Lake, City Councilor.
Alan Glass, City Manager.
Mike Gilner, City Attorney.
Elizabeth Armstrong, Mayor.
Brad Hick, Mayor for Town.
Tom Hicks, City Council.
Denise Miller, City Council.
And we are excusing tonight Brenda Steinman. She was a resident this evening for an hour or so. The next piece is a letter from residents.
Could you speak up, please?
Yes.
Sorry, I'll try to hold my mic a little closer. I apologize for that. So we had a letter from Sharon Wright. I'd like to thank her for writing the letter. And next, we're going to move on to public comment. Individuals wishing to speak will be called on utilizing the completed public comment cards. Remarks should be addressed to the presiding officer. And it is not a time for debate, but for comments or questions for council and/or staff to answer or research. Questions will be answered during the meeting if the information is readily available. If answers are not available during the meeting, council or staff will contact the individual within one week or seven business days, or when the information becomes available. No person shall have the right to speak more than once on any particular subject until all persons who choose to be heard on that subject have the opportunity to speak. First up, Judy Preston.
I'm here to address the board. I am very disappointed with the mayor. The mayor has had me email you guys, ask you these questions about issues with the city. I've talked to the city manager. I'm not as sure. I found out she talked to one of the organics, told the story. And it's not true. I give all of you a list from May 1, which the mayor has talked to, and talked about all of you behind your back. This is very unethical of a mayor or any person to go around and tell people that they can't get information from a lawyer, they can't get information from a city manager. The city manager is very mismanagement. And there is, one, a wife talks on the phone. She tells us a secret about a wife. There is so much stories out here that the public can hear from this mayor. This mayor is so unethical that it is not funny. And everybody in this has got their hat to listen to us. What am I told? Don't tell anybody I told you. Matty at McDonald's, don't tell anybody I told you. Talked about the water projects? Wrong. Information? Wrong. I got information for her to ask you guys. This is how this mayor runs. I'm asking each and every one of you to take a motion to vote the mayor out.
Thank you. Kennedy, come, help us.
Hello, I'm Kennedy. I'd like to second that motion on voting the mayor out. She's already has one city ethics violation, so I'm not sure how somebody with an ethics violation is able to sit in a different position without the board. She's told residents what to say at meetings. She's also given them FOIA request forms to try to FOIA documents that apparently the city manager and the attorney wouldn't present to her. She's trying to find any loophole to catch you guys not doing your job. So instead of working as a team, she's really working behind your backs. And like Judy said, there's a bunch of proof. There's a ton of people that are willing to come board that, you know, verify everything that Judy has said. We have written proof as well. I just don't know how we've allowed a mayor to sit here and cause so much trauma in the city of Linden. Never in my life have I seen something like this before. And it all stems from one person, and it's the one person that continues to have the ethics violation. And I'm not sure why we allow somebody with an ethics violation to sit in that chair. I feel like the council should make it a little bit tougher to sit in the chairs that you guys are all sitting in. Once an ethics violation has, you know, been come across, I feel that nobody should be able to re-sit in council or mayor. Once you violate the city ethics policy, I believe that, you know, strike one you're out. But I believe that if you dig the digging that Judy is, you know, referring to, that you'll see that she has violated the ethics policy once again. Thank you.
Mary Wixstrom.
Hi. Do I need to show you where my address is and all that? She's saying yes.
Yes.
Okay. 224 Hyatt Lane. I live right on, it's all over there. And I just have two questions. What is the final plan for sidewalks? It will be on both sides or just one? Two, the second question is, will it start? Mainly not just because of traffic, but for people that live on the road, what should we expect? That's it? Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Heath.
I'm just looking for a clarification on the water bill. I know during the summertime, I have a separate install here for the sprinkler system. And I just wondered if it's going to have these additional, the base fee and the water debt fee, are those going to be added on to the debt invoice also? And what if I don't turn my sprinklers on? Would I be charged anything at all? Would the usage only?
Thank you. Rhonda Heffel.
Hi, I'm Rhonda Heffel, 705 East Boston Road. My issue is with the water hike. When we moved here four years ago, I paid $230 every three months. Our first water hike bill was $448. This last one is $552.66. I called the city. They sent somebody out to look for a leak. There's no leak. They say our usage doubled. Our usage did not double. We weren't even towns for two weeks. We have a well that is a sustainable well. If I were to turn that well on, what am I going to be charged still for? And I don't like the way that this was all handled. It's just been thrown at us. I feel like it's been manipulative. When Mayor came knocking on my door campaigning, she was told, I was told about the tax hike or the water hike coming then. A water hike to me would be maybe a hundred dollars, maybe a hundred and fifty. But to triple my bill, I can't pay that. I can't afford it. I can't imagine that our elderly here on budget, they can pay that bill. There has to be something you guys can do to help the citizens of this community. Because I don't want to go into debt just to have the convenience of water in my home. Thank you.
I'm hoping I don't spawner his name. Steve Mullen, Mullen?
Hello, my name is Steve Mullen. I own Great Lakes Concrete, paving with my partner Casey for 103 North Berry Street, next to Pimpleberry and next to Michigan Avenue. I'm here today to talk about the car show that goes on behind the building on Thursday nights. Most of us don't mind the car show. However, the people that attend the car show are very rude. My wife works at Pimpleberry, does nails late at night. Those people will make elderly women park across the street from church and walk across Silver Lake Road because they won't allow them to park. My business, I have myself, my partner, a sales guy, we also have private managers come in, we also have performers who'll come in. We can't get in. We don't have a place to park. So I started a little petition. Surprised, surprised, I'm not the only one that doesn't care for the car show. I've got a list of names here. I'll get to the clerk when I'm done speaking. I would just, I don't want to cancel the car show. I don't want to ruin it. I just would like to be able to come with some ideas of where else we can move it. My idea was going across the street at the church, across Silver Lake Road. There's nobody ever there. My opinion is still public parking, and it's never used. I did speak with the Masons before I joined the board here today. A gentleman named Randy Kessler, who we talked to you, Jerry.
Yep.
He said his voice is concernous to you in the past. He was saying the same thing. He would have signed my petition, but he did feel like it was the right thing to do because it was more than just him. But he said that he would pay with you, and if whatever, he needed a signature from somebody, he would have made it happen. At the end of the day, I just want everybody to understand I'm not against the car show. I just think it needs to be moved somewhere else because there's operating businesses over there that they are pitting on and they're pushing customers away. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Rodriguez. I couldn't make out the first name of Linda.
That's Mike.
Mike?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that.
Sitting up here. On September 9th, 2021, I sent the, sent the city a letter, which they had first sent me. It was about the meter, they were going to put on a new meter, and I said I didn't want it. I know how to respond to these particular things. So for me to go into all this documentation, I'm just going to cut to the quick. And I basically said, if you can send me something back truthful and sign it, notarize it, put your name on it, and I'll go with it. I just briefly, excuse me, I briefly got something back, and I'll just read just one part right here. Everything said in the opposed letter is true, right there. Anytime any city or anyone in a representative presentation says something like that, then I take it for the full context of the word as in truth. I sent someone back, which was much longer than that. And I quoted a few titles and a few other things, and basically saying that, yep, if you do that, then I want to notarize. I got nothing back. But I got another letter back and saying that, oh, yes, it would be, and I, there again, said, make sure it's truthful, notarize it, send it to me. It didn't happen. Then I also started sending it to City of Hill. And I'm sure Tom Price knows about it, and also, also Brokaw. And this was back in 2021. I got nothing back on that, that it started expiring charges. Now, I can push it farther and take it to a court, and I know I wouldn't because I have all the documentation. The only thing I want to see is, basically it said, your water prices aren't going to increase. I said, okay, you said it's true, then prove it, send me the documentation back. I need anything back. As far as I'm concerned, that was a lie. And there it is. One other thing that might be had. I guess we're supposed to be getting, or you want to hook us up to floodwater? I don't think so. I mean, that's advanced stuff. We should stay as it is. City well, we're fine for us. Okay, that's it, folks.
Ron Barish.
I would try to make my husband do it, but he, I'm making him. Hello, my name is Jan Barish. Ron is my husband. You get 200 feet across the road. I'm sorry. Okay. I had a couple of questions. Why are our water bills an even amount every single month? They're always 600 or 700. I don't believe every month we use exactly the same amount of water. I don't believe it. We go up north in the summer. We're gone normally Thursday to Monday. We go to Florida for two and a half months in the winter. But we get a water bill, same usage. Now, it might drop a little one from us being in Florida. My other question, it states in here about the size of your meter. How do I know what size my meter is that you folks put on? Okay. On the new bill, it says W B water base fee and then debt fee. All right. How long is my, how long do we have to pay on this debt? And how much is it? Nobody knows. How long, how do I know, is, do I have an individual amount for just my house? Or is it just, no matter what or where you live, it's divided evenly across the county? Or anybody on the system?
Everybody's is different.
Everyone's different?
Yeah.
Everybody's is different. Okay, so how do I find out how much mine is?
Why is?
And why, why, and if this is not true, you can tell me. I was under the impression that Charter Lit, the new senior citizen place, was allowed to hook into the Linden water system instead of the Fenton, which I believe that's in either Fenton or Fenton Township. Why did that complex? Why are we allowed to hook into our water? Was that voted on by everybody?
So ma'am, just to clarify for public comment, we'll try to answer your questions later on. But right now, it's not a back and forth, okay? So I'm trying to take notes, and we'll try to answer them. And just for clarification, if for some reason we're not able to answer your questions tonight, we, we as staff will follow up with you to make sure they're answered. Okay, thanks.
Because from the time the new meters started last, let's see, in the billing period from June 1st to August 31st, was that my usage was 700. My amount due was 191.88. I have another bill from September 1st through 11/30. Same amount of usage, 700 even. The bill went up to $266.24.
Excuse me, I don't want to interrupt. Your time is up, so if you could just wrap it up, I would.
Well, that's, that's just it. I have a lot of small concerns, but questions of, you know, we didn't get any information. Just all of a sudden, we're changing the meter. So, and the result is we have to hook up our bill.
That was great.
Law for the layman?
Good evening, members of the Linden duty board. My name is Dustin Undasik. I stand before you tonight not only as a resident, not of Linden, but of Fenton. I grew up here. But a resident impacted by the decisions being considered. I'm also an advocate for lawful, transparent constitutional sound governance. I'm not an attorney. My child were abused by the Seventh Circuit Court. My daughters were a lot abused in the Seventh Circuit Court.
Excuse me, sir. Sir, you can come into here.
And, and so my daughters were victims, so I started to learn law. And formally, I'm here formally to place on the record and serve my intent to seek conjunctive relief on any votes proceeding on any of the water issues going to be discussed. I'll be at the Chateau Board tomorrow, and let me walk through why. Genesee County in 2020 through 2020, 2024 has had willful and material noncompliance with laws and regulations of federal funds on the supplemental audits on the public website. These include ARPO funds. So these ARPO funds need to be accounted for, and Genesee County is behind on transparency on producing these results. You can't keep spending taxpayer money if you can't account for the last two cycles. It's just law. This becomes securities fraud. I'm not here to pick a fight. I'm here to stand up just for due process. The second thing, or second thing, timely qualification of 2024 federal audits. This injunction is just asking Genesee County, we will participate, but we want to know where the money went. There are laws, there are primes in the federal supplemental audits identified by Plan B R A M that my team has found. We also have conflicts of interest in all the property these water lines are running through. There's about three people that they're tied to, and there are a bunch of LLCs that have conflict of interest. For, in the last is legal framework of precedents is, city attorney, as you know, the Supreme Court in 2024 rule on Locust Bright versus Ray Mundo Enterprises, and it removes Chevron deference. Chevron deference was when the EPA, it allowed the EPA to make a ruling on its own rules or statutes. This was removed because it is void of due process. They are not judicial. They are not governmental. They are an agency. Therefore, they cannot act in law, and regulation compliance must be followed. I want this to be a remember that, a reminder that from the Court of Claims reviewing the floodwater crisis, this is the county where they're poisoning people. I want you to hear that. These people have a right to due process. They have a right. This violates the First and 14th Amendment and 42 U.S.C. 1983. With my last 10 minutes, I will serve this whole board, and I am ADA protected, and I do have reasonable accommodations for service on file with the Seventh Circuit Court. I just ask to please cooperate with the residents for FOIA transparency because the reports and results are way off, the finances are missing, and that, that equals extra weight on taxpayers' middle-aged bonds. We're asking to work with you. I'll help with the law side if you would like. But that's it.
If I didn't call you for your public comment, it was because of an agenda item. And so I will be calling up all the comments on the PUD during that section of the meeting. So next is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make the motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion on the consent agenda?
Dick?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
X?
Yes.
Queen?
Yes.
Armstrong?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Really quickly, ma'am here. Would it be okay if I try to address some of the other comments in case others can't stay? I won't be able to address all of them and stuff, but between myself and some of the staff, we can try to address some of them. Mary, 224 Hyatt Lane, in regards to Safe Routes to School Project. Don, do you have an update on that?
I do. So, yes, along Hyatt, the sidewalk is on both sides of the street. Yep. And the state will be letting this in July, I think it is. So we anticipate a late fall start for the project.
Cindy Heath, I think it is. I apologize if I don't have the last name right, but you asked for clarification on the water bill. You have a separate meter for your sprinklers.
So no, and just clarified, Brooke, do you want to, do you want to go ahead and take that?
Sure. Yeah. So on the sprinkler bills, you only occur fees when the water is used. So when the water runs through the meter, that will start occurring the commodity charge. And then there would be a base fee at that time as well. There's not a debt fee on the law, so you're already paying the debt on your home meter.
And, and just to clarify though, the lawn meters, that's the same way that we have always done that. There's always been a base fee on the lawn meter, correct?
So you only pay them when there's water used.
Correct. And then the usage is, is the commodity fee, so just for clarification.
So you're only charged once you reach a hundred cubic feet.
Rhonda, I, you mentioned that your bill was tripled, things like that. I, I'll have to follow up with you. I don't have everyone's individual bills in front of me. So we'll have to, we'll have to, the staff will have to follow up with you that have specific questions about your actual usage and things like that. And so we, we will certainly do that. Car show, again, appreciate the comments, things like that. The, the permit was approved at the last meeting. So it, the car show is approved for the upcoming season. We did not receive any feedback on that, but I can follow up with you after the meeting. Mike Rodriguez, in September, in September ninth, twenty twenty-one, Tom Trice was our interim DPW director at the time. Again, I don't have the information in front of me specifically. You're referencing the meter project that we did? That specific meter project, yes, there was no, there was no increase for bills at that time on the meter project specifically. This project and the most recent water increase is something completely different outside of that. We were moving. So I'm not going to get into a back and forth. I'm just trying to get to your question the best that I can and I will follow up with you. So again, I don't have the specifics of, of, of your bill specifically. But I'm just referencing that that was a completely separate project. It was not related to this project that we were, we were doing right now. So again, I'll follow up. Yeah. Oh, really, really quickly. It is not Flint Water. It is Karen Gondi line. It's surface water from Lake Huron. And for those of you that are staying later on, John O'Brien will, from the county drain office, will probably give you a better explanation of that and the quality of water and things like that. But it is surface water. It is not Flint water. It is not the same. It's the Karen Gondi line that comes across sixty-nine. So. Again, I think it was Ron, but I think your wife spoke for you in regards to your, your bill being the same every month. I don't have an answer for that, but we can certainly follow up. So you have an explanation. And Dustin, thank you for your comments. I don't really have anything to follow up with, so.
Okay, I'm moving on to our first discussion item is the Genesee County Water Connection.
So John, do you want to, not to put you in the hot seat or anything like that, but today, tonight was really for residents to hear kind of what to expect and counsel on what to expect with the upcoming connection to the Genesee County water. And know what we're looking at as far as pressure, things like that. So John, I don't know if you want to just give a brief overview about the project and then provide them on things that, to look for in the upcoming connection. We don't have a, a specific date for that. And we also have Dave Richmond with Row Engineering here to answer potentially any questions related to that. That'll be up to the mayor.
Good evening. For those of you who don't know, good night. John O'Brien. I'm Director of Water Waste for Genesee County. Couple of comments I wanted to clarify that I heard in the audience. The city manager is correct. We are Genesee County Water Supply. We are not associated with the City of Flint Water Supply System. It is two distinct water systems. They were pulling from the Flint River. Our water supply comes from Lake Huron. So it's completely two different water systems separated. We're not interconnected. So for your comfort, it is not City of Flint Water. It is, it is Genesee County water from surface water treatment plants. Second is the Divisional Water Waste is a quasi-agency of the county. We operate, we are operating really separate from the county. We do run our own books, our own audits, our own financial mechanism. So if there's any concerns, we're the financials of the county. We are completely separate legally because that's the way it was set up under Public Act three forty-two. So what to expect? Right now, the water line has been completed. The water tank is operational at Thompson and Fenton Road. It is ready to bring water in. The goal would be is to flush the entire water system out of one changeout. Is change out all the water that's currently being dwelled water, flush out all the pipes over a two, three, hopefully three, four day period and then start bringing in, in fresh water. We have the ability to bring it in at a significantly higher pressure than you're currently operating at. And what we've done is we've agreed, we've established, we've set a meter with an adjustable valve that we can maintain your existing pressure. So initially, you're going to start out with, with the same pressure that you're currently operating at. And then once the city is comfortable with that level, we'll slowly, at their request, turn it up, probably in increments of five pounds at a time, until we can get it up to full system. The concern is you've been operating at such low pressure. By bringing up higher pressure in water, we may create water main breaks. Because they're under such low pressure, we may see additional water main breaks as we're building pressure up in the system. So that's going to be occur over time. We haven't decided what that timeframe is yet. We're just going to learn and adjust as we go because I don't want to undate the city with twenty water main breaks in a year. So it's going to take some time to build us back up to full pressure. And we may never get to full pressure. We may get to a point where you're saying, this is, this is adequate. The second thing is, is our water quality is different. Because we are surface water, we are not considered hard water. But we're not soft because we don't fully soften. So we're, we're, best way to say, best way to describe it is we're, we're mildly, mildly hard. But we're not, we're, we're sitting at about a hundred, a hundred and ten milligrams per liter. The second thing is we don't have the minerals, the iron, the manganese in the water. It is a surface water, so you won't, you won't see those problems. Over time, the community and individual residents may be able to, if they choose, turn off their softeners and, and take the water straight. Most of our residents, we do have right now like seventeen communities using our water system and none of them have softeners in their systems. That's, that's, that's a preferential choice by individual community. So we anticipate, hopefully, end of this month to begin the process of switching. So with that, I guess I'd, willing to answer any questions of the board.
Denise, do you have any questions?
Yeah. Well, hopefully you can hear me because my mic's not working. The damage to pipes when you turn this on, I know you're concerned about the pipes going through the main pipe. But I have a very old home, nineteen forty-seven. What about my pipes that are going to my house? Were, were there concerns about that and who would fix that?
That would be, I'll, I'll say this, it's going to be best to be answered by your city DPW. They are the ones that are going to operate the system. It's still their water system. We still the city's water system. All we're doing is providing the water. They will be making the decision when to turn up the pressure. And I'm assuming you're similar to most communities that the right of way line is where the city ends and private property gets open.
Don, you want to, I don't know, you want to add anything to that?
Sure. I mean, the, the pressures that the county intends to provide us are well within regulated pressures. So it's, it's not as if you're going to have pressures that are beyond what the average household should, should hold. Now, if you have a house, if you have an older home and it's, it's used to having thirty PSI, for example, and we take it to fifty at some point, then potentially there could be a, there could be a leak if, if there's an defect in the plumbing in the house. That, that plumbing belongs to the homeowner. So we're, we're, we're providing, we're providing typical pressures and, and every plumbing system should be able to handle the pressure increases we're talking about.
Do you, my question to you, do you know if they had pressure problems with the last communities you went to with older homes?
No, no.
I think that's all my questions right now.
Tom? Where?
He said it's a three to four day flushing, flushing process. Could be oil water or anything like that. Are we doing it by zones? How are we doing it?
Normally we, normally when you have a boil order, it's because you've lost pressure. So as we begin the process, we'll be pushing water in. Because we're on the northeast side of the community and your, your water plant is on the northwest side of the community. We're going to be reversing flow and we're going to be, we're going to be laying out. And, and Don Drew has got the, the layout of, of the flushing zones. There are your flush one zones and flush the next and flush the next.
What residents should expect is it'll be similar to when we flush hydrants in the spring and fall. So there may, there may be cloudy water. There may be rusty water. Doesn't mean that the water's unsafe. You just need to run the water until it's clear and then it'd be safe to use. If for any reason, we would have to issue a boil water alert, certainly we would notify the community. But we do not intend to do that.
Yeah, we're going to charge us for flushing out our own shit.
If the water goes clear.
That was, that was my concern is what, what the residents should expect.
I guess the one other thing I can, I can say is how's your water plant is out now? Northwest, because we're in the northeast, we will have some water main where flow reversal is going to occur. That normally flows from west, east is now going to flow east to west. And the best way to describe it is, is like a dog's hair. It lays down one way and then we're going to flip it so it's, go to create a little bit more orange water temporarily while we reverse that flow and reset the pipes.
John, can you speak to a little bit about the tests that were ran on the various pipes from our current system? And what, you know, just the process that those went through and what that showed in that testing?
So one of, one of the requirements of considering the switch is the state of Michigan required us to do an analysis of your existing pipes and what effect converting from groundwater to surface water would have. So we obtained, I believe, four services, five, five water services of approximately eight foot length. And then we operated them at our water plant through what's called a pipe loop. We slowly introduced our water through the pipe, similarly to a hole, and measured the water quality over, over, over a year period. And we found no negative impact from switching from your groundwater to our surface water.
Thank you. Pam?
Yes, so you're testing, took into consideration pH and everything you have to.
Yes, we had, we had to match the existing pH of your existing water system and then convert to our water, our water system to be able to monitor that.
And so those test, the end result is that there won't be any?
We, we did not see any, we didn't see any leaching because we add phosphates to our water supply for adding that coating. And our pH is running about eighty-four, so we're running a little base in the trouble.
Okay, can you speak to the water quality, the benefits versus the groundwater?
As I, as I indicated before, the biggest benefit is long term, you should not have to, to run water soft. You won't have iron and rust in your water because we're not pulling water, iron and rust out of the ground. We're pulling it from the lake.
Okay, anyway, I'm sorry, I should have re-stated this, but certain things in groundwater has potential to give like PFOS and other chemicals. There's more safety in the groundwater.
I can't, I can't say which.
Okay, well, we don't have arsenic, we don't have a lot of those things. But our water treatment, our arsenic treatment plant was just so expensive. We don't have to worry about any of that now.
No, there is not arsenic in the surface water. A question on, I think a week and a half ago, there was a water issue at the St. Clair River where there was a chemical in the water. And you weren't supposed to fish or swim in water. If there's chemical spills where your inlet's coming in, how does that affect the water when it comes here? Okay, we have, we've got two intakes in the Lake Huron. We are north of Port Huron. Basically, we're around Lexington. So we are, one, we're barely north of all of the industrial, both on the Canadian and Meritown side. We also have a fourteen day storage rather more inland. So if there is a problem in the lake, we have the ability to shut off our intakes and let it pass before we turn on, we can operate off of our, our in-ground storage. Okay, thank you.
I'm going to take a bit different approach to this and hopefully that's okay. When was the last time that the Drain Commission raised the rates of the county water? Do you know?
Two thousand seventeen.
All right. To date, how much has the city paid into the county system?
The city?
The city of London paid into the county system.
I don't have that.
So phase one of the project is what we have, was cash and it's one point four. Brooke, correct me if I'm wrong. It's like one point four million for the first phase. And phase two and phase three is financed over twenty years?
Yeah, through DWR.
Yep, with a grant portion. We originally thought there was going to be a ten percent forgiveness, but there was an initial grant during the year.
Yeah, you can grant.
But to the tune of one point four million, Brooke will get you the specifics.
And you have one, one, one payment for the DWR.
Okay, I don't know that we've paid that yet. I think we just got, or did we? Okay, it's coming up. Okay.
And then we also received ARPA funding, correct?
The, the project received ARPA funding, which is like old sub-linden and Fenton.
And the, and the city of London used their ARPA dollars for the phase one as well. So in addition to the county ARPA funding.
And when, can you, a little bit more about the water main breaks? Because are we talking city there? I, I heard rumor, but I just.
So right now here on, water mains basically are enclosed by underground. And they work best when you're operating the same pressure all the time. You're operating forty pounds, you're, it works fine. As you increase that pressure, there may be leaks or there may be weak spots. It's fine at forty pounds, but at fifty pounds or sixty pounds or seventy pounds, it will begin leaking and require a water main break. So that is, that is why we're going to start out basically at the pressure that you're currently operating at. And then the city will make the decision. currently operating at and then the city will make the decision to make a request. All right, we're comfortable, turn it up five pounds and we'll turn up five pounds and get back to steady state, everything calm down, and we're ready to turn it up five more pounds. The goal would be to get the community up, the entire community up above fifty pounds pressure for normal water supply.
All right, so the next question I have for you is, um, we typically now go to the residents and let them ask questions. Would you like to answer them all at once or individually as they come up?
Um, I guess my purpose would be the same as you currently do is, you hear the question and if you want me to answer it at that point, I'll answer it. No, I'm just going to...
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so we're going to, um, put a three minute timer on this for this, for the water, um, unless you're coming to speak for a group as far as the water, okay?
Really, really quickly too, really quickly, just to clarify.
You have to throw a paper, sir.
Sorry?
You have to throw a paper.
To speak again? Okay, fill one out.
No, he had, he filled out a paper.
Oh, okay.
He did. Yeah, really quickly though, just to clarify, if you guys have questions specific to rates, John is not going to have that information and things like that. We are doing a reevaluation of the rates specifically. If you have questions about your specific bill, if you have questions about the rates, those will have to come to us as staff individually and we will have to follow up with you at the meeting. John is here to speak to you guys about the actual connection and what we're going to experience when we have that, when we finally do make that switch. So, again, Don and Dave can hopefully help with those questions if necessary.
Great. Uh, thank you very much for that presentation. I do have one question for you. You mentioned a word quasi.
Again, sir, address it up here, he can hear you, but all the comments are supposed to be directed up here.
Okay, maybe I'm a time doctor. Uh, so, first question is this, um, in the Flint water prices and multiple, um, laws and documents, Michigan has had a history of separation of powers violations. One of those is quasi. You hear the word quasi, like FOC, front of the course, is they have quasi judicial functions. That means they span all three branches. This is very serious because all of you have been able to call this. Can you please confirm that, that, um, when you said quasi, that this agency is following separation of powers and there's no violations there, they're not overreaching? And they're following both the bribery and the enterprise in form of regulation? The second is, has anybody done a financial transparency analysis on the land leading up to all these lines? Because if you do, you're only going to see three or four major people that have bought properties very oddly with some very interesting transactions over the last two and a half years. There are some LLCs that are under the pinning them and it sure looks like some financial mismanagement or potential conflicts of interest or unjust infringement. I'm not making an accusation, it's just the facts, but I find it weird that someone can come through London, my hometown, and grab properties, even small pieces, that the water line's going to run through. It sure seems like this water line is actually fueling development at Prices Airport because there was appeasement just approved for Ryan LaFontaine to bring power in. He's telling the residents of Chateau de Laque that there's not being developed. There's something not right here. In the ARPA funds analysis in two thousand twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, one of the major issues was vendors. Federal auditors, Plant Moran called this out and it had to do with ARPA funds. And I'll give you an example, two hundred thousand dollars was spent on a park. I don't think that qualifies for ARPA, I just like to know, I don't know, but I want the details of it because financially it's not making sense and none of the ARPA audits or the corrective action reports from the facts and findings of the last two years of embezzling almost a hundred million dollars off the books of Genesee County has not been disclosed. I have two hundred investigators working on this right now. I'm just asking for some cooperation. If the water projects don't yield transparency and he doesn't validate separation of powers, the ARPA funds, and, um, I will file an emergency injunctive, or motion for injunctive relief based on civil rights violations because this is huge. And the third question is, um, the vendors. So, the big, the way that Flint embezzled money through the federal grant program is through LLCs. And the federal auditors called this out in a supplemental audit, I recommend everybody go onto the supplemental audit page and look through this. Have all the vendors on the water project been vetted? Are they in good standing? Because that is a federal requirement to receive ARPA funds. If not, the Fed's going to come in and actually audit everyone with Pam Bondi because this is securities fraud. There has been no transparency been given back to the United States government on these federal funds. The federal auditors asked Flint to release the vendors, the list, and Flint told them no. I think those three things should be clarified and these residents should know where that money is because A, we might have received more as London from the county, they've mismanaged funds for years, and B, if we mismanaged funds, it'll offset their expense. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other residents that would like to speak on the water?
I got you. You keep saying pressure. What? Let's go like this, if we're out of you out, we get standard pressure, right? Well, if you're in a tank, isn't that called gravity? That's not a set pressure. That's gravity. Can you say gravity? Now, that's simple science. That's what this is. And with what Pam had said about P O and stuff, we don't have that in here. You kids are asking questions too, which some are here and some are here not. You didn't have all the facts before you signed the contract. You did not have the facts. The contract should be in void and the council should listen to the people. We want our wells. We want set pressures. We don't want house. How can he sit over here and say, "Your homeowner's chair is going to have favor of your place"? That's not right. You didn't know all the facts. You did not know the facts. And when you come to the debt, I don't understand it. You take a debt, it's a one month sum, but everybody has a certain thing. I got one thirty-one eighty-eight, somebody's got eighty, somebody's got something. Well, why you have a bill? Every resident should get this thing. Why not? I don't know. Maybe it says opinion. Maybe that's all it is. Everybody wants his opinion? That's all he says? It's my opinion. But you didn't have all the facts. But you listened to somebody's opinion?
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Chair Phillips, seven one five Riverside. So, I listened to the Genesee County Commissioner meetings and please, I'm not sure if I have the date correct because I, my phone is out there and I can't check it, but I know Jeff Wright, the Drain Commissioner spoke, I believe it was in January of this year, and, um, to the board, to this gentleman sitting over here, I would like him, if he could, to verify the amount of ARPA funds received. I believe it was either twenty-six million or twenty-nine million that the county received for, um, water and infrastructure improvements. So, I just would like that clarified. And then I just want to make sure I heard him correctly. He said that they audit themselves and when I think of audit themselves, I mean, that just makes my mind go a little bit longer. Um, yeah, separation of powers, so, so again, I guess, as a concerned citizen, um, for a lot of residents, for, I mean, I can't imagine these people on fixed incomes, I just, my heart breaks for all of them. But I think we, um, the people, need an outside audit by not their choice, the county's choice, um, by we, the people's choice. So, to the board, to you, I would like, um, I think that needs to happen. We need to, we need to track this money to make sure London's getting the proper amount of ARPA funds in here to help us citizens out. So, thank you.
Yeah. I have a comment from Trina, Ava, um, and it's, there's one on the water here?
Yes.
So, you can come and speak about those waters?
Mine's more on the utility bill. Um, I'm a single mom of five. Many of us here are either single parents or hardworking parents that cannot afford these outrageous prices that are unconstitutional against our liberties for living. It rips the food out of our children's mouths. How can you guys sit in these seats, each one of you, and be okay with that? What about your children? What, you guys get to sit on a pretty penny? Not all of us have it easy. There are people in this community who love this community that don't want to go outside this community and take their kids outside of a good community. Why? Because outside of that, look at it, look at the world live. So, now it's hard for me to raise my children in a community that's safe for them because it's almost not affordable. Not my fault that I can't afford it. I have health issues. I can only work so much. I have lupus with seizures. And being a single mom on top of that, I work hard for what I do have for my children and what they have and to feed them. And I can't do that with this. It is very unconstitutional. Bottom line, these water utility bills increases are in violation of the citizens' constitution to the rights of living and the free liberty? Or have we forgotten our constitution and the Bill of Liberty and our rights? Where does the municipal board get off that it's okay to tax, charge, and build its citizens, residents, community beyond their living means to even live life and provide for their children and their families? I shouldn't have to work four jobs just to pay water so my kids can wash their cells or drink water and worry that the water that you're drinking is parasitical or toxic as it is? And now I'm being overtired for unhealthy water that's making our citizens sick? Where's your moral consciousness?
Just to clarify, Trina and everyone else that spoke about the rates, I'll reiterate again, just to be respectful of John's time, he is here to answer specific questions about the actual physical connection. If you guys have comments, questions, anything in regards to rates, please see us as a staff and we will try to follow up. We understand this is frustrating. The city feels very similar. These people that are sitting up here that were elected to these positions all have, you know, a responsibility to pay city taxes and to pay, uh, utility bills in that event. So, they're not, they're not, you know, um, I guess, protected. So, please, just out of respect for John's time...
That's what we want to know and quit beating around the fucking bush.
We're all here to tell them to come.
And she said that we geez...
We're going to take a five minute recess.
Come back with some answers, please.
It's a quasi fund.
Oh, thank you, yes.
Everyone, please make it to their seats.
So, before we get, we get started, um, council has heard this from me many times, many of the audience haven't, uh, but, um, you know, I've spoken up a time or two to redirect folks' attention. Not to cut anybody off or to be rude, but, um, we do have the authority to remove people for disorderly conduct in the meeting, which we've never done and no one wants to do. But, um, the only way we can avoid doing that is one person speaks, when they finish speaking, please sit down. Folks here will do their best to answer questions when everyone has spoken. The back and forth, especially the commentary, if anyone is speaking under their breath or even loudly enough about what someone else has said, just not very polite. So, we would ask that you follow those rules so we can get through this and everyone's comments can be heard.
Are there any further people that would like to speak about the water connection piece? Not water rates tonight, that is not being discussed tonight because we are still awaiting answers from PFM. And until we have those, we cannot speak on anything as far as water rates. But if you would like to speak on the water connection piece, please come forward. Okay, all right, thank you. Would you like to answer any of those questions, Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, I took quick notes, so, um, basically, the first question was the quasi-government, quasi-pounding. Um, the Division of Water and Waste was established, is established under Public Act three forty-two of nineteen thirty-nine, which is a state law, so we're an independent agency, but we're enacted by the county board. So, uh, we are, we are called Genesee County Water and Waste, but we are actually an independent agency within the county. The second is, uh, we do have separate, not, we don't do our own audits, we still have our own, own separate audits and we have to abide by the same rules. So, we have to submit, just like a city or a township or a county, we have to submit our audits to the state, just like any other, and to serve respectfully the question.
Excuse me, sir. Can you verify? That's not the question. Wait a minute, sir. This isn't the time. That's not the question. You've had your opportunity to ask the question. Can he answer it? That's what it's supposed to be. He wishes to talk to you after the meeting, but don't interrupt this gentleman while he's talking. You've been given two opportunities to speak and we've given him an opportunity to respond. You have given me an opportunity to ask a question. If he doesn't answer the question that I asked, this is all for naught. This is not a courtroom where it's back and forth. No, I just ask, can he validate on the, on record today, are they following separation of powers? Definitely not. That's why, because you'll never make a...
So, the second issue was pressures, uh, a simple explanation is, is our water tower is approximately fifty feet taller than your towers, which will generate an additional twenty-five to thirty PSI pressure. So, it is gravity, but it's, our towers are much higher in the air, uh, so that creates kind of the gravity pressure difference. Yes, uh, the county did, or the Water and Waste Administration did administer approximately twenty-nine million dollars in ARPA funds, but those ARPA funds were from the county cropper for several projects. We had phase one, phase two, and phase three of the subject lakes. We had, uh, the Cursley Creek Interceptor that's being constructed. We have the water system in Burton. I have a project in Otisville for two hundred thousand. So, the Division of Water and Waste administered ARPA grant funds, monies that were received directly from the federal government to the county or to the local municipality. So, we didn't generate any of that money, we just, we administered it and we are the ones that have to keep the books and submit those on the federal lines.
And just to add to that, specific to the ARPA funding, each community that wanted a chance at any county ARPA dollars, we did have to go through a grant process and fill out, um, and, 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 uh, request, uh, our projects and then went through approval process specifically for, I know for London... I know for Linden and somewhere, I think, Fenton Township on there.
So with regards to water chemical testing, we test our water supply at Lake Huron on a weekly basis, weekly, daily basis, we monitor. And then we take the concern chemicals, which are molecules, on a monthly basis to make sure the water quality at the lake is good. We then, at our water treatment plant on the east side of the county, we again resample and verify that we do not have PFOS in our water system. And then, once we distribute it to the county, we then collect and sample all the water in the pipes to verify that we're not introducing any PFOS there. So the water is tested at the lake, which is the water source. We test it coming into the water tray, the plant going out of the treatment plant, and then we also have to test it in the distribution system throughout the county. We have significant amount of testing, which can be found on our webpage for Genesee County Water and Waste, on our water quality reports.
And do you have anything additional to add to what the gentleman was saying or nothing additional?
To be honest, I'm not sure what you mean.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, John.
And Mayor, if I could just piggyback on what John was saying, the city also has to continue testing water and those regulations are by Eagle and State of Michigan. And so one of the things that they've asked us to do is additional testing. So I have some forms here if you're a resident and you're willing to be a sample site for us. It's information that we take, we send it out to an independent lab, we have it tested, we submit those test results to the State of Michigan. And so we need 40 locations to pull samples from. So if it's something you're interested in being a part of, I have some forms here. We certainly would appreciate it and then we can get you additional information on what that sampling looks like. Thank you.
Sorry, we can't answer any more questions because I've already closed out the water questions. Thank you, Mr. O'Brien, for taking your time and coming out here as a representative for the drink commissioner. I appreciate it. I'm sure we all can. Okay, we are now moving on to Forest Ridge Estates Primary Unit Development. We'll plug. I already have three people that have turned in their comments and then we'll open it up for more. First is Brendan Krug.
Hello, my name is Brendan Krug. I live at 108 Nicole Lane. So I'm talking about the water right now around my house, which is already pretty high. I have a sump pump that runs every about 10 seconds. My basement just fills up with water that doesn't run. I have, in a year and a half I've lived there, I replaced two sump pumps. Every four months, I clean up the pipe through the iron ocher. I was wondering what the new subdivision, what are they going to do to take care of this high water if it's not going to add already to the high water table? And it's not just my property, there's several people up in here today. I'm speaking for their, their property even across the street, kitty corner of their water is in their ass all the time on that way. So what is this new subdivision going to do to this high water table? Do you do all the clay? And as well, our end of our court, that drain doesn't fully drain when it rains at all, that thing fills right up and floods the neighbor's house right into the garage half the time. So are they going to fix that drain? Any other drainage issues? Are they going to do any trenches or any detention ponds and where's it going to go? There's that whole train tracks that stop the loss of sewage straight into the rivers. Sorry, can you hear me? Sorry, I had some questions earlier that came up. If we haven't had the water already applied, which I thought we did, why are we paying more already? And why are we, also, why are we paying a city and county sewers? I don't remember that from before. I think you're wrong. And that's all I got for it.
Thank you. Eric Boujade.
Eric Boujade, 276 Nicole Lane. Told by my HOA vice president, I just had to come and say what I said last time, but I don't give anyone permission to come on my property to backfill my lot, change the grade of my lot whatsoever to help them build their subdivision. They need to figure out their own issues. Their problems aren't my problems. I don't want that water backfilling my basement to change the grading of my property to help them out. So I give zero permission to anybody doing anything to my lot to help that new subdivision go in.
John Hill.
I was going to give the, Patrick, you're one of the city council members. I'm John Dino, and I live at 292 Nicole Lane. I'm addressing the Linden City Council on behalf of the Forest Ridge Glens Condominium Association Board of Director. I'm also a co-owner. There are problems in Forest Ridge Association and Forest Ridge Glens Association. Brendan that got up here and talked, he's from Forest Ridge and Eric is from Forest Ridge Glens. Building 30 new houses in the area without considering the problems or meaningful solutions will only make the neighborhood's water problems worse. The HOAs co-owners have standing water in their yards. Sump pumps are running as much as every minute. In their underground springs, the land and the subsoil is saturated with water and the water table is high. Water flows under the Wollston Road with a 24-inch culvert that's dumping water onto the wetlands on the east side of Forest Ridge Glens. The water is flowing down the east side of Forest Ridge Glens and into the detention pond before entering into the Chiaoas River. And city council members, I have photos in there of under the, the water pouring underneath the road of the last rainstorm. And that culvert you're looking at is a 24-inch culvert and you can see by the photo that it's half full. The wetlands on the west side of Forest Ridge drain south to Andrea Avenue, Andrea Court, and finally over to Nicole Lane where Brendan, who just spoke, lives. Water flows over the north curve of Andrea Avenue and around the proposed lots 1 and 2, up on the screen up there, and onto the street. The wetlands also flow into Nicole Avenue and add to the flooding that's already there. The development of Nicole, Nicole Lane as a Phase 3 of Forest Ridge Glens is attached to Forest Ridge. When this was originally set out in 19, 2002, there was no designation of wetlands where Brendan lives. Those five lots in there were all builtable lots. So if you're looking at the Eagle designations, and they call it the delineations, you'll see that one of these delineations for the proposed Forest Ridge Estates and continues on all the way down to Kathy. And in 2002, this was not a wetland. So over the ecology or the shift in the land, how the water flows, the construction that's gone on to it has flooded those lots. And if you'll notice out there, I think it's, I think it's number 76 or 77, that lot has been abandoned because it's flooded. And all the city council members have a picture in the winter and in the summer of that lot being flooded. And that water was never there when this original PUD was approved. So my question to the members of city council, the mayor, when they need to come up with solutions to the water problem before more is added, with the adding of the 30 new houses? Because if you take a look at, can you switch that to, I think, C5 or C7? You're into the exhibit green. And you go closer to the plot to start. There you go. The proposed PUD is that center section there, Forest Ridge Glens is on the right. The part of Forest Ridge is up on the top left. If you need to guide in line on the top section of the middle, that's usually what they put on to a site plan that is pretty much the center of the lot or the center of the roof. And they designate that the water from that line to the road is going to slope to the road and that line sloping to the, going to pop from there. All that water is going to drain into the wetlands. And that wetland, the additional water that's going to be draining in there is going to make the problem worse. So we want to make sure you guys address that before you approve the PUD. And what we want to talk about on Forest Ridge Glens is on the right side of that map C7. And we have several of the owners of lots 37, 36, 35, 34, and 33 here. And there is a swamp right behind their house. And when the original houses were built, the grade level was not shot properly and it was approved and they were allowed to get occupancy even though the grade was not done properly. So now they have a continuous running of their sump pump. Some people in there have replaced their sump pumps every, or three times a year and it runs continually. I include a letter from Charles or Jessica Ozman that's in here, packaged in there. I'm not going to waste time in reading here, but it's a very heart-wrenching experience that they've had living there. So we're proposing that somehow you figure out, you can, the two, Forest Ridge Estates is the center, Forest Ridge Glens is to the right. And on the property line, we would like you to consider a process and a solution for fixing this problem. Because it's proposed on the particular plan, if you see where the Grand John Preover is, there's a 600 feet from the corner of that all the way to lot number 27, which is wetlands. And the proposal is to make a swale ditch on there to run the water for that 600 feet of the back of all the houses and the roof to run down into that same location. And I have no other, no way other than you have to build, you have to dig probably a three or four foot deep ditch in order to keep all the water and take it over to the storm sewer. But I haven't seen any, I haven't seen any drawings or any, because this is the same drawing, it was on a planning commission, it was approved in February 3rd of 2025 and we've had no changes. And we're going back to, if you could turn to page C7, so you go one down. Try to C8. Oh, I see some, I think you're. Up on the right side, this is Forest Ridge Glens. You see the three houses that ranks next to the detention basin. The farthest down house is mine. The next house is Allison and Hunter White. And Eric, who spoke here before his house, is the top one. The proposal is, you can see the dark area on the backside of lot 40 and 41, which is Eric. The proposal is to come into on our property and raise that up three to four feet and backfill it from there back towards the houses so that the water will flow back in. And it just fills into their walkout basin.
Just letting you know, after this, your time is run out.
Okay. I want to say, can I address, am I to address, use the city council? But I want to make sure that David hears this. David put in some things that need to be fixed before the PUD can be approved by the city council. And I want to let you know that our attorney will be sending the PUD for Forest Ridge Estates a couple items, or probably three items, for negotiating the cost-sharing agreement. So I want to make sure that you know that that's done. And I want to make sure that you're all aware that probably come June, we're going to redo the road. We're going to finish our road. And we are going to, next month, start on the detention basins. We're not going to do a complete clean of it, but we're going to start doing maintenance on it. So that'll be starting probably the first of May and somewhere in that time frame. So thank you for your time. And all the other information is in there.
Thank you for your speaking and the packet. Are there any other residents that choose or wish to speak on this plug? Put it in here, please. Any other residents speaking on the planned unit development? All right. Pam? I know you have to go, so do you have your questions? No. Jerry?
I do not have any questions. I do have, I guess, some concerns on moving forward. I do have some concerns on moving forward with the amount of water that's around that area. I think it needs to be discussed a little bit more before we go to make an approval to allow this to go forward or to- So before we go to make an approval to, to allow this to go forward or to, what direction we'd like it to go in.
It's just a discussion that I think you'd involve the county grain commission. This needs to involve the county grain commission.
So Madam Mayor, really quickly, uh the reason that this is on the agenda tonight is um to hopefully bring the, the newer members up to speed. Also give Mike an opportunity to explain the process for um the approval of the planned unit development. And also give council the opportunity as it's a work session to ask those questions. Uh because this gentleman is waiting, it was approved at um the February planning commission meeting. Um Dave Richmond again with Row Engineering is here um to hopefully speak to um some of the comments and then uh, you know. So that's really why this is on the agenda tonight. Um so I don't know, Mike, before we continue on, do you want to explain the process here? So, so everyone's aware of what the responsibility is and, and things like that. I think that would be helpful to the conversation. Um I think we gotta kind of clarify, I guess.
So under the city's zoning ordinance, the planning commission makes a recommendation when it comes to planned unit development. And that was what happened in February. So they recommended approval of it with some conditions and now comes the city council for approval. Uh what usually happens uh between the planning commission and city council is there's a user and development agreement prepared by the developer. Um one in fact was prepared, it was sent to me uh for review and comment. And I did not finish that, I was frankly waiting for this conversation. Your zoning ordinance, I wrote this down in anticipation of the meeting. Uh this is what your, your zoning ordinance says about um what planning commission approval means. What, uh how do you interpret that? And it simply says that approval shall uh, shall constitute approval of the uses and design concept as shown on the preliminary plan and shall confer upon the applicant the right to proceed to preparation of the final plan. I mentioned this to the planning commission. If city council approves, accepts the recommendation of planning commission, that does not give the developer license to put a shovel in the ground. That, there is no green light simply because you approve it. The process requires uh that there be further approvals uh granted by the governmental bodies. The state of Michigan and the county particularly. Uh the, I also mentioned this to the planning commission. The city, uh we are not hydrologists. We have engineers and we have professionals on staff, but we're not hydrologists. Uh we, we are not in the business of, of regulating the, the flow of, of waters relates to this in, in dealing with wetlands and things of that sort. Uh that's something that has to go to the state. The state looks at it and that's one approval that they have to be given. And so if the developer, uh let's assume city council accepts the recommendation and approves it. As I said, developer can't do anything with it. He must then go to the county, secure permission from them. Goes to the state, secures permission from them. And then from any other government, governmental body that has a say in those plans. And um if they don't get those necessary approvals, no shovel goes in the ground. So as it relates to uh some of these things, uh the, the wetlands in particular, the flow of water, um I don't believe that the city is equipped to handle that, uh one way or another. To say, well, that is going to solve that problem or no, it isn't. That's why those approvals need to go someplace else. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Denise, do you have any questions?
Yes, of Mike. Um I was at that planning meeting that night. And I know the planning commission, can everyone hear me?
No.
Okay, I'll try a little bit better. Um I was at the planning meeting that night and I know that the planning meeting, the people on the board stated that they wanted um some more information from, I believe, the gentleman over there. Yeah. And did we get any of that paperwork back?
I don't know. They have not submitted revised, well, they submitted some revised plans, but I have not approved anything yet. They're not, the, the plans that were submitted are not, uh to me are not official engineering plans. They just sent some plans in where they made some changes to one of the detention basins. But I, I have not approved anything. I told them as a matter of fact, they've got a lot more work to do on the plans yet before I would approve anything. So their engineering is not meeting standards. But if I'm not mistaken, that's not necessarily a requirement for this because we still have to work through the engineering approval process.
Right, and, and that's the section that I wrote. It, it gives the applicant the right to proceed to preparation of the final plan. Um so, I mean, if I'm the developer here, um and, you know, the, the city were to come to me and say, oh, wait a minute, we want you to go get DEQ approval before the city's going to approve it, approve it. Uh it's a bit like the chicken and the egg. You know, why would I go to the DEQ if I don't have the city approval? Um, you know, which, which comes first in, in that sense? And so um that would be fixed. Does it need to be fixed at this point in time?
Okay, being new, I've got to ask you this question. So if they go off through all these hoops to get approval
Right.
and everybody else gets, gives them the approval.
Right.
Does it come back to us to approve or not?
No. No, you would be giving, it, it, you're giving conditional approval. We approve it if all those others approve it.
Any further questions?
Which, that, that is standard. So we've had other planned unit developments that have been done within the city. That is standard process, right? So you're giving guidance and approval to say, okay, we, we've given these conditions. Now the staff and our engineers and those, those individuals have to make sure that that's carried out.
I understand that. My, my biggest issue is that I want to make sure that these residents, the residents that are here right now are being heard. And all those, you know, basements that are being flooded or whatever, that they are just as important as a new development going in.
Thank you.
That's all.
Tommy?
No, I, the questions are the answer that I had on this project. Uh water being wrong and other people's property and stuff, which are, why I understand is not right. I want to understand exactly what these people are saying. Now it's being new and now I know the procedure wasn't better, feel a little more comfortable with it. As these other companies, the state and the county, did we get a chance to see those with their recommendation and plan better?
Sure, we, we could get those.
And I would like that to come back to the board so we could actually feel comfortable about it.
Well, I, I, I think it, it depends what you're asking. If, if you want to see those, uh to review them, that's fine. But they don't come back to us for approval. Because again, let's say DEQ gives a report and they say, yes, we, we give the green light to, to that project. And whatever it is that DEQ does. We don't have anyone on staff that was in a position to say, well, DEQ, you're wrong. So, you know, we, we have to accept those things as.
So we, we would have a chance to.
Sure, that those things can, I, I'm sure they're on file with the city as, as those approvals come in, but.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Brad?
As having done a few of these, I wasn't here for the original Forest, Forest Ridge on planning commission. And I do understand the current residents' issues. If you're at the meeting, you know I was lobbying for more studies and more studies and more studies. We've done those. You know, we've had the wetlands delineated a few different times. And I've pretty much guaranteed Laura Lane will be maintained throughout. But there are more than just the engineering. I know our engineer believes there is a plan that can be, that can fix the problems. But again, the city's not going to pay the engineer this new development. So the first step's going to be the newer group submitting an engineering plan that our engineer can live with and thinks, you know, it's going to work. And then the ultimate authority and drainage is the Genesee County Grain Commission. They are the, they sign off on any kind of drainage issues. But as John had mentioned, as Joe had mentioned, there are numerous things that still need to be done. As in your maintenance agreements between the HOAs and such. I don't know where we're at with other things. I wish you had a young planner who's here tonight, he would know exactly where we're at in the phase of getting all the other sign offs and agreements together for the whole development. The engineering on the detention basins and such is only a, a small part. And I agree, I wanted to, I wanted to see it before we did it, but it is a chicken in the egg and they do, you know, we, I'm not an engineer. Our engineer's telling us that, you know, he's going to look at it. The county's going to look at it. And I have to take their word for it. Because I don't have the background. Nobody up on, up here on this board, I don't believe, has the background to know if it's going to work or not going to work. I lived in the London with subdivision and I've had, I didn't know when I bought my house, but I guess it was all farmer field and swamp and drainage tile and everything else running through there. Before there's drainage improvement done, there used to be ten feet of water across the street from me. I didn't know that when I bought my house either. So I understand exactly where you folks are at. Dave, do you know, has there been any other communication? No, no other engineering plans from you at all?
They submitted some engineering plans that um they detailed that newer detention basin, the second detention basin. But they were still showing um what you call free board elevation of the, you're supposed to have one foot of, you have storage elevation at one, at a certain elevation, let's say it's ten. Then you have to have free board, one foot above that to be eleven. They're still showing their free board is coming on to those properties. And I told them that's not going to work. You cannot have that. You need to rework this so that it's not, that's not happening. But they have not really submitted an official set of engineering plans. This was just something they had submitted in showing how that detention basin was going to work. It was something that they had submitted into Genesee County Grain Commission as well for the outlet. And they still haven't got approval back from them for the outlet either. So it's, to me, what was submitted is not an official set of engineering plans for me to review, to look through for uh block drainage. Because that was something I had brought up earlier where I want to see grading on the locks to understand where the drainage is going from those. That's not been submitted. Uh it was more what they submitted was just a um, to show that they were putting in this extra, this other detention basin to try to help out. But it's still not meeting the standards, not meeting the requirements that it needs to meet.
Thank you. I also know that you and Mr. Grex, the inter planner, inter mayor actually walked the site the other day. Did you notice any other deficiencies over there that we need to address between the other HOAs? I know we were talking about there was, there was some uh detention pond issues in the first two, two up in, in the Glens Inn and the, and the ridges. Detention ponds originally, they were going to have to address.
We didn't walk the site, did we? Just had virtual meetings.
Okay, virtual, okay.
Yeah, to discuss it. I have been out there and walked the site before and, and um that detention basin does need to be cleaned out. Uh the outlet structure needs work done on it. There's a lot of work that needs to be done on that as well. Um that's about the only thing I have really walked. I haven't walked the entire site through there to see exactly what's going on. So I, I, I haven't had a chance to get that far into it yet, just because I haven't really seen, to me, a set of engineering plans where I, I can go out and fully look at everything.
Alright, I, I got you. That was one of the things I had requested was a full, a full evaluation of the drainage for the entire site as, as a whole. So I understand you have the item back. I just wanted, this, that was one thing, I was just wondering if we had been out there and noticed any other deficiencies. I know it's going to be collaborative effort between the three, the builder and the other two homeowners associations to make the system work.
Yes, it is. You know, and one of the things that um, like I said, I haven't really seen a, a, to me, an engineering set of plans. One of the things I want to see does, uh I, some additional storm work done between Nicole Lane and coming down to this site to help uh some of the issues that are there. Because the pipe that was put in was grossly undersized for the amount of drainage that's coming down through there. So that's something that, that we need to look at having corrected as well. This other detention basin they put in, it's a step in the right direction, but they still haven't got it correct. And you made the point, you're not paying for the engineering of this, so I'm not going to engineer it for them. It's up to them to provide me with submit, uh an engineering set of plans that, that is going to work.
I hope that uh helps some of the residents on Forest Ridge. Know that we're not going to just let them start bulldozing land. And we are concerned with the outcomes. Thank you all.
Jerry?
I just want to be clear, these engineering plans will be submitted before we make our decision to move this process forward? The engineering plans to you, no, they won't not be? Not necess, not necessarily. I mean, as, as, correct me if I'm wrong, but as we were talking about, this is, the approval right now is to be able to move forward so they can get the engineering plans approved. Alright, thank you.
Alright, so I have a couple of things. What was that?
Can I say something?
I haven't spoken yet, so let me go and then you can go, you can go back. Alright, so um I'm going to go a little bit different of a direction with open to tonight. Alright, so these are the things that I would like to see in place prior to the final plan even coming to council. The perfor, uh a performance bond for the city, which is standard. Performance, you know, whatever you want to call it. I'll, I'm going to call it performance bond. Okay? That's going to include all the normal things, grading of plots, lighting, the lin, you know, the, the detention basin, drainage, does that permit, all of the normal things that are in performance bonds for the city's portion. Then I would like to go into a separate performance bond based on what the planning commission, the recommendations of the planning commission that will cover um the roads for Laura Lane that they will be driving down in order to come in for the two to three years that they're talking. And I would like inflation included in that for the three years. Um as well as if at any point, any of Damon LLCs, I believe that's what this is called, Damon LLC or Damian or something of that nature. Um if their detention basin, Laura Lane's detention basin is going to be used at all in any way, shape, or form, I would like that their percentage is that of maintenance included in that separate performance bond that is held. So that every resident is guaranteed to have the things that the planning commission is that grew in and wrote in. Before a performance, or before a final plan, these are just the things I'd like to see comes to council. Both performance bonds is that guaranteed. The drain commissioner to have the final, you know, his final plans is that, as well as the engineering reports. I would like to see all those things. I also, based on my conversation last Thursday, would like um a soil, soil boring sample for each individual plot back in that section to check the water table. Because it is my understanding that it's quite high back there. No different than it is in certain portions of Nicole. And so I would like that to be done on every single lot. Um and then the final bit that I would like to see is a maintenance agreement between all parties involved. And this, these, this is just my starting list. This is where I start of my asks. Um I do know about the water problem over there. I'm not going to go into great detail, but I do know it exists. I'm not going to go into great detail, but I do know it exists. You know, the conversations that I've already had with Don, Roe, and Adam Young, y'all know that I am aware of those. This is my just basic start. I have a very hard time bringing something to council for approval that, in my opinion, probably needed to stay for another time in planning commission. But that's just my opinion. I don't know that we were quite at the point that it needed, you know, council needed to do this quite yet. So those are the things that I would like to see. Mr. Hill?
And just for council's benefit, if we're going to open it up to Mr. Hill, we have to open up to everybody.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Hill, what I would say is this will come back before council. So at that time, please come back and speak again.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mike, could you address, I don't, as far as the performance bonds and those requirements?
Well, I just made note of them. At this point in time, I think it's, I've been given a use and development agreement to review. I know that touches on some of these. At this point, I'm just, I take note of your concerns.
Thank you. Okay, next is the manager's update.
Just a few things to update you guys on. We did have three firefighters recently complete and passed their fire instructor one certification. Kristin, our clerk, also completed her third year at Clerks Institute and is now, will now officially be certified through Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks. Just waiting on the certificate. In the last weather event that we had with the rain, the roof on the sunroom here could no longer take it, and it did collapse. So we did have to get a contractor in here to take that out and remove that. So as you all know, that's been an issue that when the city took on the management of 101C, that was a longstanding issue prior to the city coming on board. We were able to secure grant funding along with some CBG funding that we're working on to do the necessary renovations and replace that room yet this year. So that is one of the areas that was supposed to be renovated, and again, that will be moving up forward, just so you all know. Last week, we did Kpop Box City with Lyndon Allen Hyatt. The kids were really, really excited to host all of us and our department heads and things like that. And we're looking forward to going back for the ribbon cutting. And so that's really all I have, unless you guys have specific questions for me. Mike, I don't know, do you have anything to add to as far as attorney?
In terms of the attorney report, I just wanted to comment, I think the women are gone that raised the issue. But the city council has no control over eligibility for office. If you've attended meetings before, you've heard me say that. It's all set by statute who can serve, who can be elected. We have no control over that. The idea that city council can remove any individuals or have control over that is just, well, so that's all.
In regards to that, what do we do with what they're, I mean, they're asking for?
Under your ordinance, if there's, if there's an ethics violation, it goes to you to route to me.
With that being said, I call this meeting closed at eight thirty-five. Oh, actually, do I have a motion to?
I mean, a motion that we.
Sorry. Do I have a second?
I'll say.